The mayor had a small surgical procedure and is at home recuperating. So I will be chairing the meeting tonight. But I'd like to call this meeting to order, the April 22nd, 2021, Meeting of Mayor and Council. If I could call up Pastor Mike Wells with New Covenant Church to lead us in prayer, and then if everyone will stand, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance thereafter.
Thank you, sir. Let us pray. Lord Jesus, I thank you for each one of these public servants. Father, I pray that you would make us all to know your will. I pray you strengthen them to lead in the midst of these chaotic, yet opportune times. I pray, Father, you unify our hearts for the good of this city and for the people created to bear your image, and that all the world would know that from one blood you've created all mankind. Lord, I pray that you would let the Spirit of wisdom and truth reign in this place, and that you would move strong on their behalf. I pray, Lord Jesus, that any weapon formed will not prosper, and that your peace will reign in this place, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Next item on the agenda is number two, awards and presentations, and we will now hear a presentation by the Ethics Complaint Board. Could I ask those members to come forward? Mr. Jefferson, he was the chair.
My two counterparts, they wanted to get up here so quickly that they called me back, and then they chicken out and say, "We're not going up there right now." Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Robert Jefferson. My address is 1344 Wyandotte Ridge Circle here in Valdosta. You have a letter in your possession, I hope all of you have received it, from us, the Board of Ethics, Attorney Shelton, Attorney Dunison, and myself. Excuse me, I got allergies real bad, so bear with me. Notifying you of our decision to dismiss the ethics complaint against Mayor Matheson on about, that was filed on about the 15th of February this year by a group identifying themselves as the Coalition of Community Organizations. What I'm going to do, since you have the letter, you've had a chance to read it, I'm going to just briefly recap it. The complaint indicated that the mayor of Valdosta repeatedly violated a number of core ethical requirements articulated in the City of Valdosta Code of Ethics ordinance. That ordinance number is 2014-13. To address that complaint, you all established a Board of Ethics. This body then appointed Attorney Dunison and myself, and then we later selected Attorney Shelton, which you confirmed on 25 March. We had two hearings. The first hearing was just for planning and organizing. The second one was held on April 14th, was to determine if the complaint should be dismissed or not dismissed at that point. At the April 14th hearing, we, the Ethics Board, determined that the complaint should be dismissed. And our rationale was that it failed the state facts sufficient to invoke the disciplinary jurisdiction of the mayor and council. Now, I don't know if you have a copy of the Ethics Code of Ethics with you, but that's, you can see Section 6, Item A, and it also states the same in Section 7, Item C, of the Ethics Ordinance. And that is in that letter that we sent you. The ordinance required us to submit in writing to the complainant and to mayor and council our decision, which we did. And you, again, you have a copy of that. That ends the task in reference to our duties as far as this ethics complaint is concerned. We will address any questions or concerns that you have.
Does any of the council have any questions to ask? Councilman Howard?
I want to ask Attorney Tanner and Mark. With the findings of this board, are we required to accept those or that decision? Just permit? That's what I'm asking you.
I don't think the ordinance requires you to accept them, but it appears that the case has now been dismissed, so I don't think there's any action for the council to take at this point.
Okay, so now are we allowed to ask the panel questions?
Yes.
Okay.
You wish to ask some more questions?
Yes.
Continue.
Mr. Jefferson, you're the chair of the panel, and I heard, I listened to each one. And my question to you, Judge Dunison, do you think, I know y'all, we got to the point we said, "We want the mayor to be able to earn a living. We want him to be able to work on the radio station and earn a living." But when they were talking about blurring the line between being the mayor and the radio host, the radio host, are we at the point now where we could say, "You're able to be a radio host, but not in the radio station, reference that as the mayor of Valdosta, or in my role as the mayor of Valdosta?" Are we at that point now, that conclusion that you guys came up with, or you saying that he's able to say what he wants to say regardless? That's my question, because we want to find out if you're going to be the mayor of Valdosta or you're going to be Scott James, the radio host. That's what we're trying to find out. You're putting the city and the council in the face of that. There's so much other stuff that we like to be talking about, but every time we get to that point, what people think, what's going on with the mayor? We don't want to do that. So we want to find out from you guys. What do you guys suggest that we do?
Well, the Ethics Board was charged with making the decision if that written complaint violated ordinance. We found that it did not invoke the jurisdiction of this package, and therefore we dismissed it on the grounds we said. So I think you're at the point, you can address questions and comments, as you will, the council or individuals.
If I could, Councilman, the, I think as far as the ethics panel is concerned, their duties, their charge, they have completed that, and they are now done. I think to answer your question, that is something that could be considered by council, if you wanted to carry it forward with council in some form or fashion. It wouldn't be done through the ethics panel.
I understand that, but we're at the point now where we're talking about making changes to the ordinance, so I would like the panel to give us a suggestion, so if we change the, the ordinance, we can go ahead and include their input, because we want to make sure we're doing this right. We don't want to go through this.
Well, okay.
So that's why I'm asking you.
That's a better question.
If they had any suggestions that would help us.
Okay. We can reserve that.
That's a great question, Councilman Howard. I've already talked with Mr. Jefferson, as we begin the changes to the ordinance, and look at it to bridge some of the gaps, and look at some of those things. I've asked him as the committee chair if he'll be part of that discussion, and as what they found as they begin to look into this process. So that's being worked on as we speak.
Mr. Barber, may I ask a question to you, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
My question is to this board, why did we announce that it was public, and then when the people get here, they are not allowed to speak, and we go into executive board meeting, where we advertise it in the paper, open to the public?
A public meeting, that's correct. It was advertised as a public meeting. I'm going to let Attorney Tanner, he can give you that differentiation a little bit better than I can on that topic.
Because the citizens are beating us down with this, and we are caught in the middle of it.
Yes, it was a public meeting that was publicly advertised, but a public meeting obviously differs from a public hearing. The terms of the ordinance gave the Board of Ethics the power to determine how the process would take place. And I think, as Mr. Jefferson said, and as he stated during the actual meetings of the ethic boards itself, they, the first meeting was for scheduling purposes, the second meeting was to determine just that succinct question between them of whether or not it would be dismissed on those four grounds, and they chose one of the four grounds. But meetings such as this are not always open for public comment. We allow public comment as provided in our statutes or our ordinances, but this is what we call a limited public forum. This is not an open public forum. So what I mean by that, and I wouldn't suggest it, but you have the power to eliminate public comment, the citizens to be heard. You have never done that, and I wouldn't suggest you do that, but this is a limited public forum, just like that. That was a limited public forum. So they chose not to take comment from the public at that time, and that was within their powers to do that.
Is that stated in our ordinance?
That they choose the process?
No, that is a limited, is that?
That is not stated in our ordinance. That is the type of, in this case, this has been litigated with Valdosta in 2008, the type of public forum we're in. And there's people, and there's familiar with that litigation, but that's traditionally, a council meeting or a commission meeting is a limited public forum. So that's the reason why you can say you get five minutes to speak or three minutes to speak, as compared to you get unlimited time to speak. So that's the, that's the law.
So is that something that we were able to change in the ordinance, or is this going to be?
Yeah, if you could structure, if a future Board of Ethics, you could structure how to process, you could take away some of the latitude they may have, and when I say "they," just the future Board of Ethics, you could say, you probably want to give them a little latitude, but you say, "You've got to have, you know, you've got to do this and do this at minimum," or something like that, so you could structure it in a new ordinance.
Okay.
So Attorney Tanner, with us changing the guidelines, we can include the citizens to be a part of the Board of Ethics now, instead of all being judges and et cetera?
Yeah, you could determine the qualifications. The GMA puts out a model ethics ordinance, and there's four alternatives in that model ethics ordinance. One of, ours is one of the four. If you look at the GMA website, they further advertised that two cities to look at is Marietta, and the other, I believe, is either Conyers or Covington or one of, or Marietta's just like us, except they have a, they, the members are, have the same qualifications, but they sit on the board for two years. That's the only difference. It's not, they don't appoint them every ethics. They sit on the board for two years.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do, I have a question, and I question Mark, you can come back, Mr. Attorney, and possibly to Mark. At this point, with the decision that the panel has made, can the council go any further with making a suggestion or a motion as for the final decision of what they think of, a final decision of their findings?
If you follow the ethics ordinance itself, the ethics ordinance would suggest that it's over. It's been dismissed in writing, and the reason why it says it says that, it says a couple places they can dismiss in writing, and then it says if a complainant or the subject of the complaint, in this case, the mayor, had a problem with the findings of the Board of Ethics, it doesn't say they can appeal to city council, it says essentially they can appeal to the Superior Court of Lowndes County. So that's, that's why I render that opinion. They do, they can seek relief in the courts from a decision they do not agree with, so.
But I thought the council makes like the final decision on whatever the panel decided, like?
If they came to you with findings, if they got past the stage, and they came to you with findings of fact and how they concluded, there's two penalties, one of which is a request for resignation, and the other, I believe, is a public reprimand or censure. So, but it doesn't appear that's going to make it to you because they've dismissed it.
But it's my understanding, if a complaint is brought against the council, or with the city council members, or the mayor, that the council, or the mayor, the council and mayor can do a public, what they call reprimand or censorship or something like that, or have a vote of no confidence or something like that?
A good question. If you follow the ethics ordinance, it would suggest that you would not have that right. Now, does council have a right in, outside of the ethics ordinance? Well, that's, you know, you have a right to put something on the agenda and address something, because that's, I mean, we've heard a lot about free speech, that is free speech as well, so.
Well, the reason I say that is because of the fact, I have a letter where not this mayor, but the previous mayor, in the mayor's office and in his duties, did present saying that they, that the council could do that to a council member or mayor if they did something that the, that the council or the citizens, if they did something that the council or the mayor felt was inappropriate, that they could bring a letter of no confidence, or they could censor them, or something like that? Is that not true?
I think that could be accomplished, that, I've never seen that. The only, the only similar circumstances I recall is a couple of years ago, I think you made a, the pastor resolution against the hospital authority, if I recall, and it was a vote of no confidence. So I think you're correct in a way, that if it's not pertaining to the ethics ordinance itself, I mean, if it's just in general, that I feel like a line was crossed, and we want to state our opinion on it, then that, that could be done.
Because I was wondering if it would be appropriate if I could make a motion to a certain, I guess, make a motion to, I guess, to apply a vote of no confidence in this situation?
I think you possibly could bring that up, put it on the agenda. Is it, I don't know if you can do it tonight, because it'd have to be tied to the current recommendation. I would suggest that this, it couldn't be tied to the current findings.
Doesn't it have to be an emergency to amend the agenda?
Yeah.
Do we have to amend the agenda to make a vote?
To put a vote, voting act, an item on the agenda tonight would?
I think you could, you could put it on the next agenda and consider it.
Yeah, ma'am.
Okay, well, the reason I say that is, and I, I don't know if I wanted to bring the findings up about this, when I can tell you for a fact, I was told, as a councilwoman, that I could not go on the radio and say anything until I was coached, because I did not want to. I was told, "You do not want to mess up the integrity of the city or make the city look bad," by the mayor, the previous mayor, the previous city manager, and the previous public relation person. Now, I was told that. And that's why I thought if that was appropriate for the council person, it should be appropriate for the mayor as well. And I'm finding now that, I guess, the way people read the ordinance, that's not true. And I want to just know, why is it not true now when it was true before? And that's what I'm just looking at. I see a conflict here. And I, I'm just going to be honest, I've seen so many things done so differently, for what's right for one is not right for another. And that is one reason, I'm trying to get this straight, so we can get past this. I know we are going to make some changes to the ordinance, and I hope by doing this, we will clear up a lot of the little problems going on there, because that, to me, is clearly, it was in Section 3, I think, where, where it was saying that you, I think they said that the mayor, you had, where he could see what he wanted to say on the radio. But I don't have it all, I don't have it all with you. But I was just wondering, because I think the way we are doing things, and we are looking at giving some people privileges, and up here in the council, and the other ones not, that's why I said, I did not think that was a good decision that was made. It was the panels, and they did the best they could, and I understand that. But because of some of the things that have been happening here, and I want our city to have, really have a good integrity, and not have all this little negative spots on it's what I'm calling.
If I could, I think that what you might be referring to in the communication you referenced to previous mayor Gale, is that there are three individuals with the city that are designated as the official spokespersons for the city, and that's the public information officer, the city manager, and the mayor. I'm pretty sure that's what he was referencing, but even setting that aside, councilwoman, as the city attorney stated, if you wish to bring back, or another council member or several council members wishes to bring back an action item on a future agenda for one of our meetings, that's certainly your prerogative.
Okay.
And you have the ability to do that.
You know, this is the way I look at it, and there probably is some language, and I'd have refreshed myself. I know in the policies and procedures that I'm aware of, the mayor and council, the city manager speaks on behalf of the city. I've always taken the position that the city doesn't speak unless council votes on it. That's my position. There's no official, you know, when one council member speaks, he's speaking, or she's speaking for that particular council person. It's like, you know, you collectively act, and that's the only voice of the city, is when you collectively ask. It may be a split decision, maybe unanimous decision, but that's the official policy of the City of Valdosta legally. So that's kind of how I look at it. I hadn't looked at whether or not the mayor's, in some cities, the mayor is the official spokesperson. I just know in policies and procedures, the city manager is, but, but that's kind of how I look at it, so.
Well, I think when you address yourself, saying, "As the, as the councilwoman for the City of Valdosta," that encloses it, that means you're speaking in general like that, right? If I say, "As Councilwoman Sandra Thule for the City of Valdosta," I just don't like this, I don't like the road, I like anything like that, then I'm a speaker. Would that say I'm speaking officially?
I don't know. No. It's my position, you're not, because, I mean, what can, what can, and we're having, we have an open discussion, this is good, I think, what can councilwoman Thule by herself do? Can she pass an ordinance? No. Can she see that something gets done? No. She is one of a collective body of citizens that have to act. So it probably would give that impression that you're an official, but, you know, to the public, you know, when you said, "I'm a councilwoman, this is how I feel," well, that's how you feel. That's not how the city, the city has collectively vote, and, you know, maybe it'd be wise to say, "While I am the councilwoman, while I'm the mayor, you know, I'm just speaking as my own, this is my own opinion." Something like that could be said, to maybe, you know, distinguish between the two, but that's how I look at it.
Okay.
And I have one other question. So do you recommend, in your legal aspect, do you recommend that we don't take any action until we amend the ordinance? Or are you saying we don't take, try to take any action until the next meeting, or whenever they suggest putting this on the next agenda as an action?
And let me ask you, are you talking about whether or not a public censure or a public?
Right, you're saying what Councilwoman Thule said, what I'm asking, I know you're saying, "Because the ethics board dismissed it." Or you're saying, "Since they dismissed it, you, it would be your suggestion that we don't take any action?" Because I know you said, "We can't take any action tonight," because?
Yeah. That's just an agenda issue, yeah, just. Well, I, I.
But the reason why I'm asking this, I said, if you're saying, "Because of the way the ordinance is written now, since it was dismissed, we should not move on." But so, if we, after we change the agenda and we go through the process, it would be totally different. But as far as right now, you think we should go by the rules that we had in place now?
Yeah, my, that would be my, I think that would be required as to the ethics ordinance, but what I'm saying is, if there's a future resolution brought up, like Councilwoman Thule suggested, it would be untethered, would not be tied to the ethics ordinance at all. It would just be your displeasure as a, as a right of council to say, "We're displeased with this language, is not pursuant to the ethics ordinance or not." I mean, I think at this point, that complaint, the complaint itself, not the feelings about, but the complaint itself is, is over. So does that answer your question? Okay.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
One, yes, I know you said, when we took our oath, from my understanding, when I first became a councilman, and I was, my, our previous city manager, he said, "We ought to title 24 hours a day as being a city representative. You had to carry yourself in a manner of always representing this city. Am I correct?"
You should. You should.
We should.
Yeah.
But if we don't, like what, for instance, I'm not against anyone, I'm just asking this question, that happened on the radio, and what, so we can wear separate hats, what we should not wear separate hats, as being, when we took that oath.
Well, um.
It's just like, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm going to go screedy on you now. Okay, let's say, for instance, when I get married, and I said I do to my husband, I can't go to the bar and walk in the door and say, "I'm single," because I took an oath of saying I do. Isn't that the same thing? We took the oath, similar, the oath of saying we represent the city?
I mean, I agree with you that when you take that oath, and you, you put on the cloak of council member or any elected official, you need to, you need to operate in a manner worthy of that position. Now.
Now, I know Mr. Barber is the representative, because we put him in that position. We don't never supposed to overstep him.
Yeah.
I, I know that's true. I know that's our guidelines.
And, but, and there's, and there's a difference, however, but what you, what you should do, how you should carry yourself, and then what is legally required. If that, there is, there is obviously a freedom of speech, and, and one of the reasons, I think, just that one of the board members raised was that he felt it was important for freedom of speech. Freedom of speech works both ways. That's why if you would want to bring a resolution, that's freedom of speech too. So could you, and there's probably a difference section for violating of your, violation of your oath pursuant to the city charter. I don't know if anything to do with political speech could rise to that level, but, you know, that may be a little different, but I understand what you're saying.
On the legal part of this, how do we explain this to the citizens, that they will accept what the ethics board brought back to us? You know, I mean, I know the guidelines, but we got to explain to them a way that they will respect the councilmen's from now on, because the way it is now, we've lost respect of the citizens. We've lost total respect from the citizens. How do we get that back? In your legal advice to us, how do we get that back?
Well, I think you, you try to be transparent as possible. You try to, try to educate them as much as you can, that there's not always a legal remedy to certain things. There may be a political remedy to certain activities, certain speech. And a lot of problems that can cure political speech that you don't like is the ballot box. And that's probably what would happen if, you know, if there was, if there was a provision to ethics ordinance that tried to, tried to remove the mayor, then that would run into serious legal consequences for what has took place, you know, today, that I'm aware of, you know.
Talking about the mayor, talking about how can the councilmen's get their respect back? I want a legal explanation from you, because we have some citizens out here, and we want this to go out in a positive way, not in a negative way, because Attorney Tanner, I myself, I have been beat down in my, in my district real bad behind this, and I'm asking you just for. And I'm asking you just for help in a legal way so that I can walk still in dignity as I serve my citizens.
That's a, that's a hard question to answer from a legal perspective, but I will tell you what the Board of Ethics found, okay? They had four options. They could have determined that the complaint in and of itself was unjust, okay? They did not find it was unjust. They could have found it was frivolous. They did not find it was frivolous. They could found it was patently unfounded. They did not find that. Instead, they found it failed to state facts sufficient to invoke the jurisdiction of mayor and council. There's a distinction there. That distinction means we accept what you say is true. It just, what you say is true doesn't violate this particular ordinance. And, and we have to look at that ordinance, the four corners, and we have to see if it violates. So I think that's an important distinction that they did not find it unjust, frivolous or unfounded. They found it that way. Now, I don't know if there was, if there is a legal way to, to remedy the situation you're, you're facing. It's a difficult because it's a, it's a largely dependent on a political remedy. So that's, that's probably not the best answer I can give you and I'm doing my best.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I will say that, you know, like controversial land use cases, you're always going to have half the room happy with the decision that's made and half the room that's not going to be happy with the decision that's made, but it's still the decision. And as the attorney has articulated, the ethics panel has done their due diligence and done their duty in what we've asked of them based on the outline of the ordinance. And we thank you for your service.
I just want to say to Attorney Tanner, thank you, sir, for answering my questions so that the public can hear it. I don't have no hard feelings. I just wanted your legal advice on, on it.
Thank you, Senator.
We got our money's worth out of you tonight.
Yes, we did.
No, not yet. All right, let's move it along. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our April 8th, 2021 meeting. We've all had an opportunity to review those. Are there any corrections or changes? If not, they will be approved by acclamation. All right, next item, agenda item number four, ordinances and resolutions. We first have a consideration of a request to lift the moratorium on the issuance of licenses for retail package stores. City attorney, city attorney, excuse me.
Ha, no, no, no.
City manager Mark Barber will present.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As you recall, back in October of 2019, the city and mayor council voted to place a moratorium on new retail package stores opening up in, to our community. We just want to take a step back during this moratorium and look at, at the proximity of these, of these organizations and determine if we, if our ordinance is suited for the continued growth of those type of organizations and businesses in our community. We did that. We compared ourselves to other places and, and we'll talk about that the next agenda item, but first we have to lift, I need your approval to lift the moratorium so then we can discuss the second item. Because if we don't lift the moratorium, there'll be no need to discuss the, the next agenda item. So this is just simply a vote to lift the moratorium that we placed on October 10th, 2019. Be happy to answer any further questions.
Any questions? If not, can I get a motion from council?
So moved, sir.
Can I get a second? We have a motion in a second to approve the request as presented. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration of an amendment to the city of Valdosta.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, it was not unanimous.
It was. Did you vote against it? Oh, I'm sorry, sir. My bad. But we're good now. We got that. All right, next item, consideration of an amendment to the city of Valdosta alcohol ordinance, chapter six, alcoholic beverages, article two, licenses, section six dash thirty-seven, location of alcoholic beverage businesses. Second reading, Mr. Mark Barber will cover this.
Thank you. As I just stated, this, this resulted from the moratorium and our staff looking at the different ideas that, that, that we could put into our ordinance to kind of achieve some of the goals that we were looking at with these type of businesses in our community. Also, I failed to mention, at the same time we did the retail package store moratorium, we also did vaping store moratorium where additional vaping stores cannot open in our community. And at the summit, we decided to let the, the moratorium on the vaping stores remain as it is until we can do additional research. So at this point in time, we talked about this at the summit. Currently, the way, the language reads in our current ordinance is that a retail package store has to be 300 feet from a church, 600 feet from a school. And we have nothing in the ordinance that pertains to the proximity of retail package store to retail package store. So we look at other communities our size, university cities, things of that nature that we always kind of, our sister communities that we compare ourselves to. And so our, our suggestion, and we talked about that at the retreat, and here's the map up here that shows the different locations in red that are, where these retail package stores are located within the city limits. As you remember, as we talked at the retreat, the yellow are just right outside the city limits. They're actually in the incorporated area, but they border the, the city limits. So I believe there's 13. So here's what I was just talking about here on this chart. I know it's probably difficult to read, but what, after we looked at the different cities, our recommendation, the proposal that's in this, that we talked about at our first reading as well as the summit, is to take the distance from 300 feet from a church to 600 feet. The 600 feet from a school will remain as it is now. And then we've added to the ordinance on the proximity of these businesses that there'll be 1,500 feet between the businesses. So that will be somewhat brand new to the ordinance that we introduced. We feel this will, as we talked about at the summit, we do feel this will accomplish a lot of what there were some concerns from mayor and council. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Yes, Council, Councilman Howard?
Mark, I, I think what, I understand and I appreciate the effort, I really do. But the reason why I was talking about this before is I just think we have too many in the city. So, and I understand that the mileage, I mean, the distance, it will help. I think what we did, if, if it's legal, can we put something on there that if someone wants to open one, it needs to come before mayor and council because of the location? Because what we have in our community now is we have a lot of behavior health people throughout our community in different apartments, complexes, because they're being ready. And we don't want those things right next to them. And we just have too many in the city. I mean, if you look at them, look at those dots.
There's 13. As I said, there's 13 locations.
And they're real close. I mean, it's not like...
Well, the map makes it a little closer than it is. I mean, it's a little, but you're right.
I can speak to the issue.
Right, right. Yeah. I mean, there's 13 within the limits.
There's a real void walking through.
And that's why, as well as I pointed out, just on the outskirts and the yellow dots, that adds to it because that's right there in the city limits, so.
Exactly. So my, my only thing, I, I know y'all, I know we was talking about, it may be a legal issue. We say we can't, we can't, we can limit how many we have. But if we lift the moratorium, which, you know, we just voted to do, we could get a legal challenge to say that the ordinance that we get rid of the pay could get, could get a legal challenge, if you increase the footage.
No, we've changed that in the past. That, that wouldn't be, that is what, if you guys decide to approve what's been presented, that's in the ordinance now. You know, one of the things we talked about at the retreat, councilman, regard to that is that years past, council did give up the authority to approve every store that came in or an alcohol license period. Anybody who just wanted an alcohol license came before and that, that was granted to the city manager at that point in time. But as we discussed at the retreat, you know, I, I'm in agreement exactly what you're saying. So I think there's ways to work around and I think this solves some of your concerns. But as I said, I, what I think we'll need to do in the future, especially if it pertains to your district, we'll make that decision together and, and look at it at that point. So, but again, that's up to you guys. If you want to amend the ordinance to, to put that back on you guys, that's fine, but I don't...
No, no, no. My, my concern, I just think when I say it comes before mayor and council because you know, I mean, we all have a location map on where certain areas are. And I just don't want to take the chance on something being that close to one of those behavior health places.
I'm with you. Right. And I'm going to revert back to the example I've used. District three, Councilman Vickers had an issue at a convenience store. It was outside our current parameters that we have in our current ordinance. There was a rumor that there would be a retail package store. I felt absolutely, even though it was outside and it met our current ordinance, it was too still close to the school there, so that would have been denied. And I would have, and Councilman Vickers and I spoke about that and made that decision. So I hear what you're saying, but I think we can, can do that through this. So with the, if this new proposed ordinance, that wouldn't have been a consideration, it would have been denied to begin with it because it didn't meet the footage requirement. So that's why I think this additional footage will help exactly with that, but I'm on the same page with you. So I think we can handle that.
Any other questions?
There are some provisions under the state alcohol law that prevents the issuance of alcohol license closed to facilities like you're referencing. I can get that information to you as well, so. And that's, that's for the state issuance.
That's the state, right. And if they, if we don't, the state doesn't, they start with us. So with that, all that can be worked out that way.
I'd be happy to, sir, because at the retreat you talked about, we had gave you that authority to make sure you and the councilman got together concerning this.
All right then, if there's nothing else, can I get a motion by council?
Nobody talks, so moved.
Can I get a second?
A second, yeah.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the request, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Forwarded one. Thank you. All right. Next item up is consideration of amendment to the city of Valdosta's alcohol ordinance. This is pertaining to the consumption of off-premise and our downtown entertainment district. Ellen Hill, Main Street Director Extraordinaire will present.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. As you know, this is the second reading of this ordinance and this was an action item at the summit. So what this amendment to the ordinance pertains to is creating an entertainment district for downtown. That will include the Central Valdosta Development Authority District and then it will continue up to the property of the Turner Center for the Arts. It will include the brewery property to our west and also the new amphitheater space. So what this is, is just for all of the, all of the businesses that are in our downtown, which will be the entertainment district that has a pouring license for alcohol, they can then pour those drinks to go. One drink per person. You can only use them in our entertainment district. Businesses have the right to refuse drinks in their own businesses. Of course, no going into the parking lots and getting in a car and taking those with you. And we will have the, the cups, which we already have in our office, ready to go with a printed logo on them so that people know that these are the cups that you can use to walk around with your open container in just the entertainment district. So I'll be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
This certainly is something that we've been hearing a lot of positive comments about.
Yep.
From our downtown businesses. Happy to see this go through the process and it's now time for a vote. Can I get a motion from council?
I just have one question. If we approve this, this starts when?
My understanding is tomorrow. Yeah.
Are you putting that in the form of a motion?
What are you just picking on Cody Day? I make a motion, we approve this ordinance, sir.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the request. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Thank you. All right. Moving along, five local funding requests, consideration of a request to approve fees for the preparation of easement and right-of-way plats for the Dogwood Circle neighborhood. City engineer, Pat Collins, will present.
Good evening. As you may recall, last year, last summer, we talked about making improvements over the Dogwood Circle area. It's a place with, you know, narrow right-of-ways, had dirt roads, deep ditches, and the quality of life really isn't all that great in that neighborhood because of, of the conditions there with the infrastructure. If you recall, we annexed that area in 2005. And so we went ahead with the design and the real reason that we're here tonight is mainly for transparency purposes. And the original contract came in at forty-nine, five, forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. That was just for the design. Of course, at the time, we didn't know a lot of things because we hadn't surveyed and designed it. So the city manager, since we were anxious to get started, we went ahead and he used his authority to go ahead and approve the contract because it was under fifty thousand. Well, since that time, we've done some additional work and we started looking at things and we're going to have to do some, get some existing, we're going to have to acquire some more right-of-way over there. It's very similar to the neighborhood where we had annexed before. Do you remember over at Lindsay and Stokes and Savannah where everything was kind of out of place? Well, that's what we've got over here. So we authorized them to, to go ahead and look at the right-of-way. The initial cost came in at thirty-nine thousand, three, nine hundred dollars to, to do all the legal work and survey work. We were able to value engineer it down to twenty-two eight. If you take the twenty-two eight and the forty-nine five, that puts the total project in at seventy-three. Yeah, seventy-two, three. And so consequently, tonight, we're asking, since that exceeds the fifty thousand, that you approve the amount of twenty-two thousand, eight hundred dollar fee to innovate engineering. And again, it's, the total fee then will be seventy-two thousand, three hundred dollars. Take any other questions that you might have?
This is a great project. It's, it's going to be great to see it get completed.
So are we making a motion for the seventy-two thousand or the...
For the twenty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars.
I make a motion, sir, that we approve the twenty-two thousand, eight hundred for this project.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve the request as presented. Is there any discussion? If not, can I get a right hand of all those in favor of the motion? It is unanimous. Thank you. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, it is now the time that we go into citizens to be heard. For those that are new to our citizens to be heard, this portion, we ask that you come forward, state your name and address so that we may have that for the record. Our policy requires that you stay under three minutes so that others can have time to be heard. We do ask that you please direct all comments, council as a whole, and do not attempt to engage individual members of council in debate. It is the council's policy to follow through with you on your concerns. Additionally, we ask that any groups that want to address the council designate one spokesperson to represent the group in their comments. Again, this will ensure that others have time to be heard. Having said that, is there anyone, any citizens wishing to be heard?
Yes, I'm John Robinson from Lake Park, 357 San Juan Men's Charcoal in Lake Park. Right here in this building, my rights was violated from the freedom of speech. I stood back there and I raised my hand and I asked, was this a public meeting when it was making a decision about, about the mayor? I was annoyed. I was reminded of a portion of a period in my life when I represented eight hundred and fifty people in a civil litigation down in South Florida. I feel that I've been re-injured by one night whose depressing memories based upon the past of this type of stuff that I witnessed here even to this day. I heard the voices in this room tonight about the controversy of the decision being made from a legal aspect, from a concerned citizens' aspect. I'm tired of being excluded and witnessing people being excluded. This is preposterous what's going on here in this city. It's a shame before man and God that we have to contend with from day to day on this type of government. These procedures is abnormal when a board and a panel that represents all the people can't have an opinion when something is forced upon them as it was forced upon them today, this day. And the decision being read... From a decision being read, from the structure of upper escalons of power in this place. I'm hurt to the core of my heart because my life was totally ripped apart down in South Florida. My family lost everything. I was placed under federal protection by Federal Judge Hoover down in Miami. That was based upon decisions from people like this, and I feel that I've been totally re-injured from the present memories of what I've seen here today and what I experienced here in this place. I was born here on Stafford Wright Road, and it's a shame that I come back here and find this place in the shape and the design. I feel like I'm not welcome here for the way we're treated. This is, this is outrageous to what was happening in this place. And to go along with it, to try to justify it, it don't make any sense at all. You can't justify wrong. You can only justify those things that is done right, on the side of man and on the side of God. I feel that my rights have been violated.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
You're not welcome.
Is anyone else wishing to be heard? Anyone else? Come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Mark Patrick George. I live at 2203 Briar Cliff Drive. I'm the coordinator of the Mary Turner Project. I just want to thank you for taking our complaint seriously. I appreciate the questions you asked. You inherited an ordinance that's ineffective, and I just want to draw attention to the fact that it was an unethical ethical analysis. And just remind you of a few things, and again, thank you for what you said earlier. And I'm hoping you'll revisit the ordinance because I read that ordinance different than the attorney does. I think you can put this on the agenda. I think you can take action. It doesn't say what action you have to take. First and foremost, we were told this is the only complaint process for a citizen of Valdosta. We got the Code of Ethics from Mr. Barber. We filled it out. You started the process, then the mayor got to choose his person for the ethics committee. We asked Mr. Tunison, and I was hoping he would stay, whether or not they had been in communication during this process, because we weren't allowed to ask the ethical ethics committee one single question at any point in time in this process. Mr. Tunison didn't answer that question in the public hearing that wasn't really public. We do know they were having a conversation the night he was chosen, and I think Mr. Tunison should have recused himself. We were given less than twenty-four hours' notice for the public hearing for the planning session. Then we had to ask for a directive about the fourteenth, the April fourteenth meeting. We didn't know until four days, or actually, three and a half business days before that meeting that we could have legal counsel, and then we were stolid for quote-unquote waiting to the eleventh hour, and we didn't know it. And then when we came to that meeting, they immediately adjourned into executive session. This is not your fault. This is the existing ordinance. I understand that. We're hoping that you'll revisit it. We also know that employees have been held to the preamble and punished based on the Code of Ethics that Mr. Shelton and Mr. Tunison didn't seem to think was relevant. And that's about it. I was hoping the mayor was here because this was the day after this hearing, and I just wanted to play you something.
Please put the email, the text, otherwise, and I appreciate all of it. But I'd be sitting in a pew by myself, couldn't take anybody in. A lot of those people showed up. Dear Frank Barber Schmader sat and held my hand, figuring as he had to sit through something. Even the group spokesperson had to back off at the eleventh hour, saying, "We never said he did anything ethically wrong. We think it was the spirit of the complaint." I'm willing to listen, but that's, that's an odd journey for fifty days to scream that I did something ethically wrong when they absolutely know I didn't. They're saying I blurred the lines as I sit and talk here every day.
I'll just stop it there because we never said that. We said what he has done is utterly unethical.
Thank you, Mr. George.
So I hope we revisit the ordinance, and I hope you'll consider putting it back on the agenda and taking action against the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else? Please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Dr. Melanie Calhoun, and I reside at 5201 Grayfield Circle. I came to make one statement. I'm not going to go into any dissertation, but at the end of the day, you six people that sit here before us, plus the mayor of Valdosta, are accountable to the people that voted you in office, and you need to remember that, that everything you do, whether you are here in this building or whether you are outside of this building, you are voted in for a reason and for a purpose to represent the real of the people, of the citizens of Valdosta. And it is a shame when this body cannot and will not stand up for what is right and represent the real of the people of Valdosta.
Thank you, Ms. Calhoun. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
My name is George Boston Ryan, and I want to thank you all, as elected officials, for serving the people, because it's all about serving the people. Last night, I was at the school board, city school board of education, and I made a statement. The superintendent failed to comply with the Open Records Act, and he did not ever respond to it, and I still stated last night. He never sent me a copy of the EEOC complaint response in terms of there was no discrimination in the board, in making a decision about the court. And I just can't get it together why Valdosta seemed to be in a city by itself or got their own cell walls. I can't understand it. You all, elected officials, I've been coming for six years to you all about respecting our military veterans by placing this place on a flag on city buildings. I can't understand why y'all ignore that. We run the Moot Out Force Base. I don't care if nobody in the city says anything about it. I'm going to continue. And lastly, city council members, as Valdosta have a long record, there are many of you sitting on this board. I know you're sitting there, and I know you know what I know, that this city is filled with racism. And we know that there is a good old boy system here. We know that. That's why the family did not get justice in the death of Willie James Williams case. I'm under an eight-year criminal trespass, and I violated no law. The Sheriff Department didn't think enough of the law to put it in writing under Sheriff Pratt, and they refused to remove me in writing. They sent me a letter stating, "We don't have nothing in our records." That's not good enough, because I had it on audio tape, because I had a tape recorder when the Sheriff Department said, "You will be arrested if you go to Lounge County High School." And Wes Taylor did it. Went to Wes Taylor, Wes Taylor said, "He didn't do it. The Sheriff Department didn't do it. None of the Supreme Court judges, all of them, the federal court didn't do it." And I'm still under it because they won't remove me in writing. And until they remove me in writing, George Boston Ryan's going to spend the case as I started stewarding the military over twenty years. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
And the truth, I mean.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Catherine Grant, 5237 Grayfield Circle. I have a question, and it's a point of order. How are the agendas approved, and when are they approved?
The agendas are set by the city manager.
And when are they approved?
They're, when they're wrapped up on the Friday prior to the week of the council meeting.
Is there a vote taken on the, on the agendas to approve them?
No, there is not.
There is not?
There is not.
Is that not council, a problem? No?
It's the way.
Agendas don't have to be voted on, is that right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone else? If not, we'll close out the citizens-to-be-heard portion and move to the city manager's report. Mark Barber?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Let's see, got just a few items today I want to remind you of. The first, I think we'll save that one for last, it's the most exciting. As you remember, the Spring Electronics Recycling Event was held on April 10th. It was a really big success. You know, this is the one, the first time we've held it at our Public Works Facility and not at Mathis Auditorium. We collected four thousand three hundred and sixty-seven pounds of TVs and computers and things like that, but overall, we collected over fifteen thousand pounds of old electronics and kept that from going into our landfill. So that was a great event. And again, we were able to show off our Public Works complex, and a lot of folks didn't know where that was, and now they'll, they'll know where that's at on Myrtle Street. During the week of April 12th through the 16th, the Highlands neighborhood had a neighborhood cleanup, and they collected around fourteen tires and four-point-three-seven tons of debris. So quite a great cleanup with the folks in the Highlands area in District Four. I want to remind everybody that the Popular Lunchtime Concert Series is back. The Main Street Office will host the Brown Bag Lunch Concert Series downtown. It'll start on Monday, the third, and last through Friday, the seventh. As you know, that's on the Lounge County. The courthouse lounge is always a great fun for everybody. The time of the day will be eleven-thirty to one-thirty, Monday through Friday, as I said. You can bring your lunch, do what you want, but there will be some lunch there that you can purchase if you want to do that as well. So that's always a fun time. Good weather, hopefully, we'll hold out for it this year. The city of Valdosta will host a Love Where You Live Community Hot Spot Cleanup in District Three on Saturday, May first. On that Saturday, May first, city staff and volunteers will be working from nine to twelve PM in the neighborhoods between from River Street to Gordon Street and North Oak Street to Lamar Street. So that will be our area, our quadrant, they'll be working in. But as, also, if you recall, we're doing things a little different. We're just not showing up that Saturday for four hours and cleaning those areas. We'll be doing that all week. Hangars should be on some, the citizens' doors, saying, "We'll be through your area all week. Put your stuff out, and we'll come by, pick it up for your charge," and help folks where we can with that. So this new method that Mr. Hardy's instituted is really, really popular, and it's really helping. We're seeing a lot of impact in the neighborhoods we're trying to clean. Also, in front of your desk tonight is, if you remember last meeting, Mrs. Lorraine Randolph came to speak to us about a safety of a tree. We did make contact with Ms. Randolph, and we are handling the situation. I think, hopefully, we'll get to a resolution that the property owner beside her and Ms. Randolph will be happy with. So we did address that issue from last meeting. Last thing, most exciting is, remind everybody, April 27th is Valdosta on Demand kickoff. And on your way out tonight, go out the back dock, and our vehicles are here, they're going to look good. We're really excited about them. They delivered this afternoon right before we came up here for council meeting, so everything is falling in place. But also, if you haven't responded to our email about who can be in attendance at the grand opening, the big celebration we're having on the 27th, please let us know because we want to do something a little special, and we need really a good head count for that. Again, that's going to be at 10:00 AM on April 27th across from the MLK Park. It'd be a great backdrop there in that area, so please let us know if you plan to be there because we've got something special planned for you. So with that, I think I'm done for this evening. Any questions?
That is a strong finish. I like it.
Yeah, wanted to say best for last.
All right then, thank you. Next item is the council comments. Open the floor for any members of council that wish to speak.
It's me again.
Councilwoman Vivian Cody.
GMA did a virtual class Tuesday, and for the state of Georgia, fully vaccinated at this time is eighty-five million people, and that's a twenty-five percent population. And sixty-five years old, we've done thirty-five million. So that's a sixty-five positive improvement for seniors. In the African-American family in the state of Georgia, we're at thirteen percent. So that means that African-Americans in the state of Georgia, we need to get out and promote the need to take the vaccine. I'm going to ask Mr. Barber, Protem, and our council, we got to come up with some kind of solution that we can promote African-Americans really understanding what it's up taking these vaccine shots, because we are only thirteen percent in the state of Georgia. And I know that's more, we're, our population is higher than that. So that means that we're not getting out, taking the shots, and in our districts, we got to get in our areas and promote taking the shots. Thank you, sir.
Any other members? I do have a couple of comments. First of all, I agree with you, councilwoman. I did note that you had promoted that several area churches were sponsoring a vaccine drive. Has that been held yet?
Yes, sir, already been held. I don't know how the outcome was. Hopefully, Ashling can get with those churches and see how it went.
Well, I do know, I recently had my second shot, and when I pulled into the parking lot of the health department, my vehicle was the only vehicle. Needless to say, I was in an, the longest period I had to do was that fifteen-minute wait. So they're clearly open for business for anyone that wants it, and as I've driven by South Georgia Medical Center, a number of times where they've been out on the streets with signs, trying to get people to come in, and I think we are.
We've slacked up from taking the shots.
Yeah, yeah. The other thing I want to talk about is Monday night, of course, we kicked off this New Year's Government 101, you know, the citizens' government 101. Great class. Probably the only disappointment I had was that everybody in there was, I'm thinking, over fifty years of age. Not that there's anything wrong with people over fifty, I am in that group, but, but still a good group. We had one person there that was actually coming back and had taken this class for the second time. She was in the inaugural class many years ago, but if, as members of councils, if you get an opportunity over the next six weeks to drop in on the class and just say, "Hey," maybe share a few words, that'd be a good thing to do. We want to continue to support City Government 101. And with that, I would encourage several citizens that are, that are here tonight and those that are not here, that if you've, if you really want to know what, how the city government operates, there's a lot of moving parts, and really want to get an inside look at every department, I encourage you to sign up for City Government 101. It's a great opportunity to learn something, and it's a well-presented program. All right. With that, I need a motion from.
So move. Second.
Got a motion? Eric? You keep sitting down there, I need you up here.
I wanted to address the council. I think right now, we have some decisions that we need to address. I mean, you think about what we've been through this past year, throughout the pandemic. You look at our accomplishment that the city, building permits are up, we didn't have to lay any employees off. We, we had no tax increases. We created jobs throughout this pandemic. These are the things that we should be proud of. That's why we want to cry out. We want them to come hear our company. We don't want to always have a country. So the reason why I say we have worked, we need to fix this all, we need to fix a lot of things that, these concerns, they're legitimate concerns. I don't want anyone to brush them off because the things that are said were, I mean, you heard one example when we were playing, that was said on the radio, and that was as men. That's what we got to, we got to, when you said, "There's something, councilman, we need to think about this," so we come to our next meeting or our next call meeting, we need to make, make some decisions so we can be everything said. Freedom of speech, yes, but freedom of speech is not comfortable, our freedom of consequence. You're welcome to say what you want to say, but there's consequences afterwards. So I want to keep on this. I'm done.
Well, I certainly agree with you, councilman. This body has the right to take those kind of actions. I certainly agree with you that we need to address some deficiencies. I certainly agree with you that we need to address some deficiencies within the ethics policy that we've all witnessed and experienced, and it's unfortunate, but it was, it was the one we had to work with at this time, and I look forward to working with each member as we move forward on those improvements. Anyone else? We have a motion to, in a second, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.